Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka, aye. Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kako.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe.
Present.
Chair Kahele.
Present.
You have eight trustees present. You have four.
Okay, aloha kako. This meeting can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we are using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you will be able to watch and listen to the proceedings. And if you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. Please raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak. We will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds, so we appreciate your patience. As a panelist, you will have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. Once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. In addition to this, the chair would like to remind everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones. And when addressing the board of trustees, please refrain from using any profanity. Joining us today, we have our board of trustees, we have our staff. We have our board secretary. We also have our board counsel, Richard Navy Woodman. And also joining us here today is our CEO, our Kapo Hana, Stacy Ferrera. So I'd like to recognize her at this time to introduce anyone from our executive leadership team.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees. Joining us in person and online, we have Chief Operating Officer Keaau Poo. Endowment Director Ryan Lee, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota. Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, Hailema Farden. Director of Economic and Business Resilience, Pony Oskew. IT Systems Engineer and Administrators, Daniel Santos. And Arlene Agnaldo and IT Assistant, Aska Rolls. Mahalo.
No one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, mahalo. The next item on the agenda is action item on Board of Trustees, 2508. This is the second reading on the approval of a new telework policy for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Lehu, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one person signed up. We have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, great. Aloha Jermaine. Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Chair.
You are recognized. Good morning.
Thank you. Aloha Chair Kahele, Vice Chair Souza, and Honorable Trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm an OHA beneficiary for beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. I'm also a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Lessee. Mahalo for the opportunity to speak on agenda item BOT 25-08, Approval of Telework Policy for the OHA, Second Reading. According to the proposed policy, the administrator shall develop a telework program that is available for positions with duties that are compatible with regular telework. Not all positions may be appropriate for telework. And telework should only be considered if it is mutually beneficial for OHA, the employee, and OHA's partners and beneficiaries. Telework is not an entitlement or an agency-wide benefit. Each employee must meet eligible criteria to participate in the telework program. And approval of a request to telework shall be at the sole discretion of OHA. The telework defines, quote, "The telework program is available for positions with duties that are compatible with regular telework, mutually beneficial for OHA, etc., and its beneficiaries, not an entitlement and not an agency-wide benefit." When and where have administration posted the list of specific OHA positions that meet this criteria? Outstated telework criteria for the OHA unfiltered rewarding to employees that have not been identified previously and justified to be telework positions as a form of benefit? So again, I want to emphasize on my concern that if a list does not exist, then it can be turned into an unfair practice of rewarding specific employees that on the front end was not identified as telework. But as they maybe appease certain individuals at OHA, that they are granted telework. They are granted to do telework. Because it is identified in this policy that you have these criterias. Well, if you do have those criterias, it's not a agency-wide and it's going to be mutually beneficial to everyone. I don't see how upfront you can identify, oh, directors are not included. These specific employees are included or positions are included. And I said in accident employee because that's what it's not supposed to be. Telework is not supposed to be a benefit to an employee. Telework is supposed to be identified to a position. Whether or not that person is in that position or not, that position is supposed to be identified as compatible with telework, mutually beneficial to all the four parties that I had mentioned. So again, unless administration provides a list of titles of positions that are upfront before the telework starts, then it could show as favoritism. And that is what an environment, a work environment, that no organization, corporation, and most especially government or a trust should start doing. Create policies, deny following the policies, and then create an atmosphere of favoritism because they didn't follow the policies and identify upfront to let all the employees know. It is identified by the position and it's not identified or attached to the individual. What I understand from reading the policy is that first and foremost, the positions are supposed to be identified to follow these criterias of the program. Then and only after that, then the manager can say, or administration, Kapo Hana or the CEO will then evaluate the work performance of the employee and see if they can work at home. Their environment is safe to work at home. And who's going to do that? Is that the office, is the operations manager going to evaluate each person's home to make sure it's safe to work in? And so, again, administration will look at the work performance because many of us have been in the work industry for years. And we can specifically recall in our minds individuals that know how to work alone without supervision and work. Or and then there are individuals that tend to get distracted and are unable to work alone without supervision. That is not making one bad and one good. It's just working with the individual and their tendency to be able to perform outside of an environment that has nonstop supervision with people walking in and out of the office, etc. Keaau Poo, God bless all of you.
Mahalo, Jermaine. Lehu, do we have anyone else signed up to speak on this item?
No one else has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. Let's get a second on this. We can put it on the table. We got a second on the approval of a telework policy for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, or a motion. I guess I made the motion, so. Motion, second, so moved. Great, okay. Trustees, discussion on the adoption on second reading of our proposed telework policy. Great, hearing none. Let's get a roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
No.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have seven yes, one aole.
Okay. Before we move on, I just want to thank all of our trustees and staff for this action item, which I think is really going to be really, really important for OHA to become that employer of choice. I would also encourage Kapo Hana to work together with our Chair Emerita Lindsay. I think she has some very valid points and things that can be incorporated into a final telework policy that can address some of the concerns she might have. And I'd like to see that if possible. Mahalo. Okay, we're now going to move on to the Committee on Budget and Finance. Under New Business, we have several action items that need to be approved, that were approved in the Budget and Finance Committee. Before I call on the Chair to agendize or to action those items, do we have anyone signed up to testify on any of these items, Lehu?
No one has signed up to speak on any of these action items.
Okay, great. Then the Chair would now recognize the Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Trustee Alapa, for the first action item.
Good morning, mahalo. Thank you. Can you hear me? All right. Your Committee on Budget and Finance, having met on April 30th, 2025, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motions to the Board of Trustees. Action Item BF 25-27, Approval to Carryover $140,000 of Fiscal Year 2024. Grant Carryover Funds to Fiscal Year 2025 and reallocate the grant's program budget to the Strategy and Implementation Economic Stability Program budget for execution of the Mahiai Microfund Program to alleviate water bill and property tax costs for native Hawaiian farmers statewide.
Second.
Yeah, we have a second. Trustees, any discussion on this action item? It's the only discussion comment I would have. Turn on my microphone. Is that, you know, we'd like to see the SNI team and Pony to execute this as quickly as possible through the CDFIs and what's proposed. And, you know, it's our goal as we approach the new fiscal year that we don't have to do this next year. And so the things that we do approve in our budget, this board is going to expect us to move expediently on them as soon as the fiscal year begins. So. Mahalo. Trustees, any other discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele, you have eight yes votes.
Okay, Trustee Alapa. Chair. Budget and Finance 25-33. That's the next item on the agenda. It's for, we're now going into Ho'akoko sponsorships. Do we have anyone sent up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair recognizes Chair Alapa for the action item.
Mahalo. Action Item for BF 25-33, Approval of OHA Funding for Ho'akoko Lahu Event Sponsorship to Ahaku Kui O Mulukai for the 2025 Mulukai Kamehameha Celebration Event on June 13th through 15th, 2025, in the amount of $6,000 for April 30th, 2025.
Second.
Yeah, we have a second. Trustees, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is action item Budget and Finance 25-34. This is for the Sweet Waters of the Dark Bay. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this action item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Alapa.
Second.
We have a second. Trustees, discussion. Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think she said June 24th. I think it's June 14.
June 21st, okay? Any discussion, trustees?
And then just for clarification, it was changed and you folks voted on it. They made a correction on the date at the BNF meeting. So the date is reflective of what was passed at the BNF meeting.
Okay, so the event is on June 21st.
Yes.
My agenda says 14, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's the original language, so that's what I had to use.
Yeah, yeah, it's agendized as it originally was presented to the Budget and Finance Committee. But it was amended and I guess we don't amend the date, so. Okay, thanks Chair Emerita for pointing that out. Trustees, any other discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka. Sorry. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, we're moving on to the next agenda item, which is Budget and Finance 25-35. This is for the Leeward Kai Kanu Club for their Father's Day Regatta. Anyone sign up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Alapa.
Action Item BF 25-35, Approval of OHA Funding for the Ho'akoko Lahu Event Sponsorship to Leeward Kai Kanu Club for the 2025 Leeward Kai Father's Day Regatta Event on June 14th through the 15th, 2025, in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Kanalua.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele. And Trustee Lindsay.
Kanalua.
We have one abstention and seven yes.
Okay, mahalo. Moving on to the next item, BF 25-37, this is for the Nahoku Hano Hano Awards coming up also on June 21st of this year. Anyone sign up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Alapa.
Mahalo. This is for Item 25-37, Approval of OHA Funding for the Ho'akoko Lahu Event Sponsorship to the Hawaii Academy of Recording Arts for the 2025 48th Annual Nahoku Hano Hano Awards Event on June 21st, 1st, 2025, in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
We have a second. Trustees, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll be recusing myself as I am a board member of OHA.
Mahalo, Trustee Souza.
Same thing.
The Trustee Galutaria as well will be recusing themselves because they're both board governors on the sponsoring Hawaii Academy of Recording Arts. Any other discussion? Not roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria is abstaining. Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza is also abstaining. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have six yes votes to abstentions.
Okay, moving on to Action Item 25-38. This is for another sponsorship for the 2025 Waikoloa Music and Cultural Festival on Moko Keavie. Anyone sign up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Alapa.
For Action Item BF 25-38, Approval of OHA Funding for the Ho'akoko Lahu Event Sponsorship to Halekuah for the 2025 Waikoloa Music and Cultural Festival Event on June 14th through the 15th, 2025, in the amount of $9,000.
We have a second, but Trustee Wahehe, Trustees, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kahele.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, thank you, trustees, for moving those action items and for our Budget and Finance Committee's work on them. Mahalo. Our next item is going to be an informational briefing. This is by OHA's Chief Advocate Lena Ala Lay as well as Kamakana Ferrera, our compliance archaeologist. They are going to give the Board of Trustees an update on the final environmental impact statement, the EIS, for the proposed Army Training Land Retention of State Lands here on the island of Oahu. Specifically, training lands that the Army currently occupies at Kahuku, at Makua, and Kavailoa and Po'a Mo'o. Lehu, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this informational briefing item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair recognizes now Lena Ala and Kamakana.
Good morning, trustees. I do have an overhead. I didn't print out copies because it's just pictures of the areas that we're talking about. Are we able to display that? Okay, okay, thank you. So I know that Summer gave you a pretty complete review of the BLNR hearing two weeks ago, going on three weeks ago on the Po'a Kuloa EIS. So I'm going to keep it short today if I can. There's many of the same defects that were raised with that EIS with respect to this EIS. Our compliance office had submitted a comment letter last June or last July during the comment period raising many of the issues. So we're going to be highlighting those during the hearing when it goes before the BLNR. I believe it should be June 6th if they're going to make the 30-day deadline. But I did just want to show you all the areas that we're talking about. If we could advance to the first slide, please. So there's three areas, Makua on the Waianae Coast, Pa'o Mo'o in the Wahiwah area above Schofield, and then the Kahuku Training Area on the east side. And interesting, in this EIS, they are actually proposing to return the state-owned lands at Makua and Po'o Mo'o and only keep one of the two lease tracks at Kahuku. So if we could advance to the next slide, we have the close-up of those three areas. So they're proposing to keep track A1 in Kahuku, which is a more Makai tract, and return the conservation zone track, which is A3. A1 is agricultural zone land. So that's the Kahuku area. If we go to the next slide, the whole area that they use for helicopter mountain training above Schofield, they're proposing to return. And then if we could go to the last slide, the state-owned land, I mean, it's Makai, but there's still, as you can see, the green areas are the federal government-owned land. So they're proposing to return the yellow state-owned leased land. So there would still be all that US-owned federal government land within the Makua area. So that's, you know, I'm sure the community, there's some relief around those returned areas, but there's obviously still a lot of areas retained in Makua in particular. It's not a highly-used area at this point in time. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of community concern similar to what was raised at the last BLNR hearing if you watched it. So I don't know if we need to go much into detail. We're going to be raising again the issue there was no shorter lease term looked at and what are, you know, what are the beneficial effects of having a shorter lease term? Lack of clarity around the cleanup that's been done. And again, with what's going to happen even with lands that are returned, what is the timeline for cleanup? How much is it going to cost? Just what is the plan around that is still not clear at all. We've asked again for HR's Chapter 60 to be done at the same time so that the community can weigh on mitigation. We also asked for greater cultural impact consultation with community, which is similar to a kapauakai analysis. So we were framing it as cultural consultation, but if you hear the board talk about kapauakai, it's basically the same thing. It's identification of cultural practices in the area and what are the mitigation actions that can be taken to reduce those impacts? So we've framed it as consultation. It's also been talked about as a kapauakai analysis. We're asking for more in-depth consultation with the community around that. And we also raised in our comment letter this time the effects on biological resources. Despite the fact that it's a smaller footprint, they're proposing to retain, you know, we're still pushing for the complete analysis because the government could always change its mind about what lands it wants to retain. So really, as far as analysis, it really needs to be done for all the alternatives, even though there is this proposal to return a certain amount of the lands. So that's the update. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns that trustees have.
Trustees? Kamakana, from an archaeologist's perspective, I mean, there's different, obviously, land retention efforts from, you know, the cultural impact assessment. Any thoughts or feedback on the existing EIS as it relates to that? I know one of the shortcomings in the Po'a Kuloa EIS wasn't a more robust archaeological inventory survey studies. Have you any comments on what they're proposing for Oahu?
Well, Lay kind of touched upon it. I mean, one of our comments that we had written in last year's comment letter was that we wanted them to do greater cultural outreach for the cultural impact assessment because they seemed, they were conceding in the EIS that there are definitely cultural practices that are occurring in the broader area, but there was uncertainty on specifically what was occurring on state lands. Plus, they did a lot of the interviews during COVID and they're using a lot of their cultural access data from periods during, you know, the COVID pandemic. And so I thought we made a sound recommendation to ask for more consultation and to consider records beyond that of COVID. Like, were there cultural access? What were the cultural access requests before that period? And so although we made that recommendation, unfortunately, they did not take it for the final EIS. And so that comment will still stand when it goes before the BLNR. And then in regards to Lay's 6E comment, we've generally been of the mindset that 6E should be mostly completed prior to the 343, the environmental document being completed. That's now a position that the state took with Po'a Kuloa, the State Historic Preservation Division, they said the same thing. And that's what led them to their arguments of there not being comprehensive inventory surveys for their lands. And so we're going to put forth a similar argument here, I think. Right, yeah, and for Kahuku, they haven't fully inventoried the lands either. So that's consistent, what we've been seeing. And I, we haven't seen what the State Historic Preservation Division is going to say yet. But if Po'a Kuloa, what they commented there is any indication, I believe our comment should be in line with what SHPD is also saying in this particular case.
So you expect the BLNR to agendize this on the 6th of June?
What was the date?
I think it's going to be the 6th just because of the publication.
When 30 days of the publication?
Yeah.
You expect the same type of robust turnout and
Absolutely.
community opposition that was felt with Po'a Kuloa?
Yes.
This is an interesting EIS because it includes multiple lands. And one action is the returning of the state land in Makua and not pursuing a lease. Whereas the others want to, which I think many would support and agree with in the community, at least the existing state lands, if not hopefully more future federal lands in Makua Valley. But the other lands they want to retain, do you think the board will, because the BLNR has to accept or reject the EIS, which we would want to accept the Makua piece at the very least, but maybe not necessarily the others? Can they bifurcate the EIS and accept half of it and not accept the other half? Or how does that work? Do you have to reject it in its entirety?
Yeah, I believe it has to be in its entirety. I mean, I hope that I think the BLNR should procedurally still hold the Army to its same duties. I don't, I would expect them not to take a more relaxed attitude just because there's less land at issue.
Trustee Kino.
Thank you, Chair. Lena Ala, thank you. From the media, I pick up that the return of the Makua Kai properties was a surprise to the community. But is that the case fully? Were there talks between community leaders and stakeholders and the military that may have led to the return of those properties?
Speak to that, but I mean, there hasn't been any live fire training at Makua since the injunction from a cultural practitioner lawsuit in two thousand and two. So that is a very long time to be holding the lands and not to be doing live fire training. They do other sorts of training, but not anything that is unique. And it's a much, again, smaller footprint than compared to other areas. I think the Pohakuloa, or sorry, the Makua area is only seven hundred eighty acres. It's much smaller than other areas where they do similar type of training and no live fire training. It's significant because that had been the original intent use.
Right, and it's very visible and long.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I should have recognized trustee Lindsay who had raised her hand first.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask if in this environmental, what is it, assessment? Are they proposing cleaning up Makua before they give it back to us?
So thank you for the question. That is, so that's an issue because, yes, there are federal requirements as well as the state requirements to clean up the land. But one of the issues we raised with Pohakuloa that we're going to raise here is they're saying that cleanup is governed by a separate law that does not go into effect until the date they actually have to return the lands and that they will do all the cleanup assessments after the lease expires. And that, and they have the duty under the separate federal circlets, Comprehensive Environmental Liability Something Act. So that governs state or government and private lands. So we are asking that despite the fact that they're going to have to do this cleanup under a separate statute in the future, that now, we want to know now. I mean, the whole point of the HIPAA process and the NEPA process is disclosure for public comment and public awareness and opportunity for the public to weigh in. So I think it's problematic that they're just saying, okay, we're going to do this at a later date as the, as the separate statute requires. Because they should be looking at cleanup now. They should be figuring out. So we have even a timeline of how long is cleanup going to take? So you're saying you're going to return the lands, but realistically, when can that happen? So we don't have any of that information because they're taking cover under this separate statute, which we don't think they should do.
So we don't have a timeline for the cleanup?
We do not.
Well, you know, this can be the same thing as Kahoula V. They gave us a price that they were going to clean up and today the island is not cleaned. And we can't get them to appropriate any more money to clean it. So therefore, that island is unusable. I don't think, I mean, I hope that's part of our, part of our testimony.
That would be a great comparison. Mahalo trustee, we didn't raise that last time, but exactly, that's the reason we want to know. We want this information. We want to know that it's going to be funded and just the timeline.
Having served on the Kahoula V Commission for eight years, I did learn that the monies that were appropriated for the cleanup was given to the Department of the Navy. And the Navy gave the contractors the contracts and the money. And the contracts did not add up to the monies that were allocated. So basically, the Navy used the money on whatever. I don't know if they used it on Kahoula V or whatever, or however it was used. But the money allocated to the contracts to do the work on the island did not complete the cleanup. And that's something that we got to build into our testimony, that it be clearly stated as to the cost of the cleanup. Where the, who's going to administer that contract? And is it going to, if the money is not enough, are they going to give us more? The whole thing is to clean up the land. Thank you.
We're going to go trustee Galutaria then trustee Akaka.
Thank you, Chair. And this is to follow up on trustee Hulu's comments. You know, the deadlines are quite vague. And as she mentioned, sitting here eight years later or whatever it is. Now Kamakana, the question is for you basically, what is the process? So we get a sense of this cleanup. What is a process for soil mitigation in a perfect scenario? And then secondly, added to that, what type of professionals and professional expertise is needed for such a job? Where does it go to? What's the first stop for this?
Well, I don't know if I can answer the question completely, but we do know from efforts that have taken place on Kahoula V, excuse me, and Pohakuloa, that part of that work involves some level of survey by UXO professionals. Because, I mean, they can't very well send people out there to do any other type of work without having that done first or else it could be dangerous. I mean, even in Makua, there, there are still accidents as recent, like in the past couple of years. So the first level of soil remediation work would be for the military to survey it with UXO professionals to know what's out there and make an educated guess on, even if they can't survey everything in its entirety, some things could be below the ground, make recommendations on how to move forward with that to allow other individuals to come in, like perhaps archaeologists to survey the area later. I mean, oftentimes with UXOs and archaeological sites, UXO specialists will first go in and then the archaeologists will come to make sure the cultural site is not damaged. I can't say that that's going to happen exactly in this particular case, but in past experience, excuse me, that's what's happened. So.
So who makes the first call on action? I mean, it seems like, are we still establishing the rules of the, of this process?
The military has procedures for their UXO staff and it's usually the military that will be leading it. But it definitely helps. I mean, they are state lands and the state has an interest and so does OHA to be at the table and to make those kind of recommendations at this time. Whether or not the military is obligated to take those recommendations, it's uncertain, but now, now would be the time to be in those discussions.
And finally, Chair, if you don't mind, is this something that the congressional delegation has been involved with? Or must we speak with them as well to, to get their, get them into the game?
That would certainly help, I think. I mean, I think on our, on our past comment letters for stuff related to the military, we have copied the Hawaii congressional delegation. So hopefully there is a level of awareness there and we could potentially utilize them. Or they could, you know, have some more skin in the game.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Trustee Akaka.
These lands, the yellow lands, the green lands, are these Crown and Government lands?
I mean, that's a hard question. I know some of them. And then Makua had private, I mean, they had Kuleana, they had people living there.
Yeah.
So it's a mixture. I think we would have to do our own map. I don't know if they've done a map of which were Crown and Government and which were Kuleana. And, you know, I don't know what kind of resources we have about that.
So given that there were families that were living there, is, it's where it was forced sales?
I think they were evicted during World War Two.
Okay, thank you. So when I had seen this on the news, they were talking about this, this yellow portion being returned back. However, the screen portion is remaining with them. And they're saying that these are federal lands. So is it where they have, they have to go through the state owned lands to get to the federally, the federal lands?
Kamakana can, yeah, I think Kamakana can correct me, but I mean, I think they have a number of government lands that they're retaining. So they're actually our federal government, the green, they're going to have direct access through government lands, I think, for the most part. And then they would still have, you know, easement rights across state land to enter the government land. There's existing roads.
So with those easement rates, how does that work? Can that be taken back?
Um, I don't know. I don't think the state would have an interest in doing that access exactly. They're maintained, you know, used roads. Yeah, I don't know if that.
So when I first saw the news regarding the, I guess it was considered a surprise return of these state lands, however, they would retain the federal lands behind that. One of the other questions I was thinking was, what specific activities are they going to do or continue there that would affect those that are now on the more Makai lands of that?
Yeah, I'll let Kamakana comment. He's a little more familiar. I talked about live fire. I'm not clear on the full extent of the federal training activities that would continue on the federal lands. Are you?
Well, we could, we could look back in the EIS and get more of a detailed list of what specifically they are doing back there on the federal lands. But it's my understanding from having reviewed the last draft version of the EIS that there is some, still some level of live fire training that they're doing on the federal lands and not the state lands. So there's that distinction.
And can you folks give a brief overview on what the HIPAA process is? Because I don't think that's common knowledge.
The three, four, three process?
Sure, so.
HIPAA, I assume you're referring to the Hawaii Environmental Protection. That's, well, they're going through the three, four, three process right now. They're trying to do it concurrently with NEPA. That's not out of, out of the norm for a federal action. And so the three, four, three process, in this particular case, it went down the path of an environmental impact statement because they believed that there would be adverse impacts. So they didn't do an assessment. They did the more intensive version and they're going through that process now. There was an environmental impacts statement preparation notice that went out first to agencies. Then there was the draft that went out after they completed the studies. We commented on the draft. We were solicited for comics for the culture impact assessment. And at the time, we had encouraged greater level of outreach, but also that perhaps pursuing the environmental option was a little bit premature at the time because there was uncertainty on whether or not they would, they would get the leases. We made a similar argument in the early consultations for Pohakuloa as well. So they're proceeding through the three, four, three process now. When they did the draft, comments came in, they responded to the comments and updated the draft accordingly. They have just issued the final environmental impact statement and then that's going to the BLNR as the final approval for the state level.
Since I think that's a good question for the public, I mean, it's, they consider it's called a stop, look and listen statute. So it's procedural. It doesn't substantively affect the final decision that BLNR can hold the army on its duty to complete all these studies and disclose the effects. But ultimately, under HIPAA and NEPA, you can say this is going to, you know, destroy the land completely, but they can still choose to move forward with the action. So it would have to be, you know, another statute or, or reason that they would have to not take the action. But HIPAA and NEPA are complied with at the point at which they disclose fully all the adverse effects and respond to public comments and mitigate to the extent that they can and are required to do under the law. So it doesn't ultimately change the final decision about land retention, which is a separate discussion. This is the initial step that's procedural and requires this analysis. So the government at least knows what the effects of its actions are.
Can we, and maybe this is done in some form or way so far, but can we identify the various stakeholders and look at possibly a convening? A convening, I know we have an ad hoc, but can we have a convening of the stakeholders? So I would imagine it'd be the Office of the Governor, Military Office of Foreign Affairs and so forth.
Yeah, I would defer that question back to the board for a further agendized meeting or possibly even executive session about steps, you know, that board council would recommend in terms of the actual lease retention, which as I was just saying, is a subsequent step to the environmental review.
I feel like these timelines, they just keep coming up so quickly and the public and all the stakeholders, including us, we're often trying to gather what we can with that quick turnaround time. But even the information that the military is providing to us, it's just, we had like, what, two, three days maybe with that printed volume? And it was thousand plus pages, fifteen hundred? So if there is any documentation that the military can provide to us at an earlier date, I think that would be helpful in our, as best as we can, have a thorough review, if that can be requested.
Okay, thanks trustee Akaka. Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we have our permitted interaction group that is specifically scoped for the army's land retention, not the other services. Because there are other EISs happening throughout the state. The Navy, the Air Force, there's several areas of land on different islands that are all following the same process. But our pig is geared directly towards the armies because that's what includes Pohakuloa and Makua Valley and these other army land retention areas. So the army has been pretty welcoming and forthcoming to have those conversations. I mean, they, at our request, provided full copies of the Oahu and the Pohakuloa EIS, both of which are in our board suite. And trustees can take an opportunity to review them. They're very large, multiple volumes. And, and we requested the physical copies, which we have on file. They're also willing to meet with us as well. I think there's other side conversations happening, you know, with the governor's office, with the DLNR. I think, you know, we could attempt to convene something, but whether they're willing participants or not, I don't, I don't know because of the nature of those conversations. So, yeah.
Mahalo. If we find that there, his circle sites are incredible damage to what would be considered revered or very important to our people or to the families of that area, is there a formal way in which the military can be held liable?
When, when sites are damaged, like under section one oh six or even state level review, because they have yet to do the state process, there are different forms of mitigations that are available. The last being, you know, some level of compensation. But compensation can also take the form of funding, maybe other cultural restoration efforts or other cultural activities in the area. So there, there is a suite of options that are available. And I would hope through the six E process, if, if damage is found, that those types of mitigations will be explored and put on the table.
And as far, if this is responsive to your question trustee, there are, when, for example, the discoveries were made in 2021 of Ivi Kupuna, OHA did receive notice, as did the lineal descendants for that area. And I understand from Kamakana, we deferred to the lineal descendants. We didn't step into the section one oh six processes, a claimant or consultant, because there were lineal descendants. So there is, there is notice, there is a process that allows for protections when there are disturbances.
I'll add one more comment before we move on to trustee Galutaria's point about the Codel. You know, they're a very important part of this process. And typically, something like this would be in the congressional policymaking bill for the military, which is the National Defense Authorization Act, which goes hand in hand with the appropriate, the relevant appropriations bill. That should be coming out in the next month or so. And, you know, for beneficiaries that are watching and are, you know, deeply involved in this, I would, I would highlight that Congresswoman Jyotukura is Hawaii's member of Congress for the second district. She sits on the House Armed Services Committee and on a very important subcommittee on readiness that has direct jurisdiction over military installations and real property management, which is where these land retention efforts would originate from. The HASK is what it's abbreviated, is The HASK is what it's abbreviated, is holding a. Full committee, Department of the Army Fiscal Year twenty twenty six posture briefing on June fourth. Next week at ten AM Eastern Time. And, you know, this is where the, the army and the chief of staff of the army, as well as the secretary of the army. Will present the full posture for the United States Army for the upcoming year. And so this is an opportunity where our congressional member of Congress could ask a question. As it relates to the army land retention lands in Hawaii, if she chooses to do so. It also may be an opportunity where the army talks about. This particular issue as part of its overall Indo-Pacific regional strategy. So just for information, that is coming up next week, Wednesday on June fourth. By the United States Army, for our beneficiaries. Okay, trustees, anything else? Good discussion, Lynn Hall and Kamakana. Mahalo for the update and will you end up sharing a draft of, of your June six testimony if the board does? Set that date for the hearing?
Yes, we can do that.
Well, we appreciate your attendance as well for Pohakula and your work that you did as well representing OHA in person. On, on that day and look forward to your presence there again.
Mahalo trustees.
Okay. All right, see no further business in our open session. We're now going to move on to. The next agenda item, which is going to be executive session. Do we have, before we go into executive session, anyone signed up to speak on any of these executive session items?
No one has signed up to speak on those items.
Okay, so I just want to make an announcement that before we recuse ourselves into executive session, that we will return to open session. And continue the live stream once we are done. And we'll end up taking a short recess, maybe five minutes or so once we do. So can I please get a motion to recuse ourselves into executive session?
I'd like to move that we recuse ourselves into executive session personally to HRS ninety-two dash five, E two and four. To consult with legal counsel.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Members, trustees, any discussion before we go into executive session? Hearing none? All right, let's take a recess and we'll come back in five minutes. Oh, we had a roll call? Okay, all right, we're back in the session. Lehua, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Galiteria. Trustee Suzha. Trustee Waihe. We have eight yes votes.
Okay, recess for executive session.